Hey, I'd like to welcome you all here tonight. It's just past six, so it's time for us to go. So if there's, I'd like to invite, before we actually call the meeting to order, I'd like to invite you to stand and join me in the pledge, and then Mike Lawson will bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I just thank you for this day you've given us. Lord, I pray and thank you for this city, and thank you for the opportunity to serve. I appreciate everyone here tonight, and thank them for coming and their input. Lord, I just pray that you'll give us some guidance and direction on the discussions we have before us, and everything we do, Lord, will be in your name, your glory. In your name we pray. Amen.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. All right. I'd like to again welcome everyone here tonight, and those, I know they're working on our live Facebook Live. Looks like, hopefully, it's, they're going to get it going pretty quickly. I've heard from a couple of people. That's not up yet, so, and I know Mark's working on it. Mark and his guys are working on it. I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, January 26, 2021, and we'll start things off by asking our city clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Sprouse?
Here.
Brian Powell?
Here.
Amelia Williams?
Here.
Jeff Watson?
Here.
Mike Overton?
Here.
Mike Lawson?
Here.
Kevin Flores?
Here.
Randall Harriman?
Here.
Mark Fugierus?
Here.
Ernest Cate?
Here.
And I just got word from my wife, our Facebook police, that it is back on. So thanks to Mark and his guys. Thanks, guys, for getting that done. So, all right. Before we open up to comments from the residents, I would like to ask the council to consider going ahead and making a change in order on the agenda. The item J during the planning section, during Patsy's report, I'd ask that you move that up to 8A to help out the presenter, and we've got a long planning agenda possibly, and it'd really help him out if we could move him up to the first item under planning. So if someone would be...
I move second.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, oh, well, we got, do we have to roll call that, don't we? We don't? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. So you'll, Patsy will bring you up first, okay? Thank you. Appreciate you all doing that, council. And let's see, we have approval of minutes. You've had an opportunity to look over those minutes, if there are no changes or additions. Hmm? Oh, yeah, I skipped the comments. Do we have anyone that would like, this is a portion of the council that the council sets aside for each meeting, to hear comments from our citizens. This is pertaining to items that are not already on tonight's agenda. We ask that you come to the microphone, clearly state your name and address, and please keep your comments brief. Is there anyone in the room that would like to comment on an item that is not on tonight's agenda? Okay, and we'll check with our folks out in the lobby. Is there anyone that wants to address the council? Doesn't look like it. We're good? Okay. All right, now we'll move on to the minutes, approval of minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I'll move second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Item 6, the quarterly economic development report. Scott Edmondson from the chambers here. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor Sprouse, and council. Fourth quarter proved to be fairly busy for us at the chamber on the economic development front. We were able to help facilitate, we closed a seven-acre sale on property on Mountain Road for a new company that's moving to town, and hopefully that company will be able to break ground here in the next month or so. And then we also worked with the company, starting back at the first of 2020, and secured an offer on 12 acres of property near Angel Drive, back behind, off of east of Old Missouri Road and 265. So hopefully that will close, we're hoping in April, so, excuse me, hopefully in March, possibly April on that. So we have several other companies that we've worked with, and helped two companies secure incentive funding from the Arkansas Economic Development Commission, and then we have two, three other companies that we're working now that are looking at sites in Springdale for locations, and then a couple that are looking to expand their existing footprint. So there's several things going on on the manufacturing side. Thank goodness. New job numbers, you'll see that since the pandemic shutdown in April, we were up just over 3,000 jobs. So the Springdale's economy is doing quite well, all things considered. Our unemployment rate is 4.2%. Now, that last figure that we had was as end of November. That's from Arkansas Department of Workforce Services, and that's still one of the lower unemployment rates in the state. Our sales tax receipts remain strong. The year-to-date, at the end of 2020, over 2019, saw 8.3% increase for the year total. Construction permits, in the fourth quarter, we had 28 residential permits that totaled nearly $7.5 million. There were 11 commercial permits totaling over $22 million, and that was in the fourth quarter of 2020. Our business retention and expansion visits made over 150 visits in 2020, and some of those were phone calls, but that, just because of the COVID restrictions. But we assisted companies with business plans, with expansion plans, also with PPE supplies, also with CARES Act funding assistance, and EIDL loan assistance. So we stayed quite involved with our local businesses during the pandemic. Ongoing construction, of course, New Casey's, construction continuing on it out on Elm Springs Road at 40th Street. The Center for Children's Health and Wellness near Children's Hospital is progressing nicely there on Jean George Boulevard. Works continuing on the new Williams Tractor Facility that overlooks I-49 just south of Don Tyson. That's going to be around a 70,000 square foot facility, and we'll consolidate their Fayetteville and Rogers locations to the new location here in Springdale. So we're very excited about it. Of course, the construction on the multifamily on Watkins is coming along very nicely. If you hadn't had a chance to go out there, an impressive complex there. And then Liv Emma here, the new complex, just past the Center for Nonprofits before we get to the Jones Center, they've started leasing, and they're already 90% occupied.
Great.
So, good situation there, so it shows the need for multifamily downtown. And then the Blue Cross Blue Shield facility near Don Tyson on I-49 is progressing nicely as well. So just to touch some high points for you, and things are going well in the fourth quarter, and 2021's off to a good start as well, so.
That's great. Let me point something out, Scott. You didn't, you gave for last year the sales tax numbers, and just in case the council's not aware, we were up 7% for January.
Okay.
And over 7%. And I want to make the point, because this Arkansas Business, when they reported this, they implied that part of that increase is because of the former Bethel Heights, and that's not true, because the reporting from the former Bethel Heights is still being kept separately. So these are numbers, and then, now, former Bethel Heights was up too, and we're getting that revenue, but it's not part of this report yet that DFNA puts out. So I want our residents and the council to know that they have told us that they will begin combining those in April. I think that means that we probably won't actually see, they won't start reporting that way for two months later, which would be, so June will probably be the first report we get that has former Bethel Heights sales tax numbers and revenue in with ours. So we're, again, we're getting that revenue, and it's set, but it's being kept separately right now, or it's being reported separately. So just wanted you all to know that, because the Arkansas Business kind of implied, like I said, otherwise, and so these numbers, when we say we're up, we're up over 7% for January, that does not include the revenue from the former Bethel Heights. So we're, that even, that even makes that a lot better.
You bet.
So, okay, thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Any questions for Scott on the report?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, man.
Scott.
All right, we're to item 7, procedural motions. What's your pleasure, council?
Mr. A and B.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for A and B. Roll call, please.
Lawson? Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Carry 8-0.
Thank you. Denise, if you can bring that mic a little closer to you, that would probably help. Thank you. She loves it.
You all do the same, okay? So I can hear you.
Careful what we ask for. Yeah. All right. Patsy?
Didn't have to put her in the closet, mayor, but it's probably been moved.
I can go there.
All right. Item 8, Planning Commission Report and Recommendations. Patsy Christie. Patsy?
Okay, we're going to start at the end and come back, and I'll get to that here in just a second. You get a preview of all the pictures. Up went too far. Can you guys start the slideshow for me again? I have to go over there and do it.
We're starting with item J.
I know, I went too far.
Yeah.
I could show you the pictures like this, and then we'll get it fixed in a minute. Basically, this is accepting a replat of the Kate for Casey's General Stores Commercial Edition on the corner of Robinson Avenue. Slow down, so I don't go too far.
I don't look like it.
I did it again. There it is. There we go. That one right there. Planning Commission reviewed this replat, recommends approval. The title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance accepting the replat of the Casey's General Store Commercial Edition, Lot 1 to the City of Springdale, Arkansas, declaring an emergency."
I move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any questions or comments from the council? Or anyone, anyone in the public need to speak to this? All right. Denise?
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Move the emergency clause to be passed.
Okay. Harriman?
Yes.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause, carry 8-0.
All right.
Mr. Mayor and council, thank you for the courtesy of moving me up. I appreciate it, and my poor old back really appreciates it, so thank you all.
Glad to do it. Those of us who've struggled with back and feel your pain, so.
Thank you, sir.
Glad to help.
Good night, y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will add that there are emergency clauses on these ordinances because they are pending developments. That's why we bring them with an emergency clause. The next item was a rezoning that was approved as ordinance number 5519, and there was an error in the legal description in that it didn't properly identify what part was C2 and what part was MF16. So we have an ordinance submitted to you tonight that will correct that legal description. The title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance admitting ordinance number 5519, which rezone certain lands, part of Lot 8 Tom Carroll Edition, and a part of Lot 6, 7, 8, and 9, and 10 of Tom Carroll Edition." This is at the south of East Emma and West Sunset, I mean, West Huntsville, not Sunset. I'm in the wrong place. Changing the order messed me up. And it will set the two different districts from C2 to MF16. The title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance admitting ordinance number 5519, which rezone certain lands from medium-density multifamily residential district MF12 to general commercial district C2 and medium-high-density multifamily residential MF16, and declaring emergency." And you can see that we had other properties in that area that we've rezoned to MF16 as well. So this just corrects that ordinance that was already approved.
Move the ordinance, pass.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any further comment or questions? Anyone out there, guys? Okay. Seen none? Denise?
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Move the emergency clause to be adopted.
Second.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause, carry 8-0.
The next item is a rezoning request that actually contains 10.36 acres. I think your agenda says 4.7. It's three separate tracts that came in altogether, and the request is to rezone the property from A1 and SF1 to medium-density multifamily residential district MF12. Part of this property was an island that was annexed into the city as one of the surrounded locations, and that's how the A1 comes in. And so the Planning Commission reviewed this request and recommends approval of the rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance admitting ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto, by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A1 and low-density single-family residential district SF1 to medium-density multifamily residential district MF12, and declaring an emergency."
Patsy, I'm trying to remember, was part of this, was it all in the county, or was part of it in Bethel Heights?
It was all in the county. It was one of those islands that existed that we did the rezoning. I mean, we annexed it in as an island. Yes. And so you can see that, as, that's the part that's not colored was the part that was an island, and that's the property that we're rezoning right there. Not all of it, a piece of it will remain. A one.
So, the, okay, I got it. Thank you.
Patsy, real quick, the change in zoning, that's what we're approving tonight, but there's not a submittal on the neighborhood plans yet?
No. And it doesn't have to be submitted with the rezoning. They will have to come back with a large-scale development plan when they get ready to develop it. But we're looking at it that the highest and best use of this piece of property is for MF16.
Okay.
And we have design standards that says you start out with MF12, and to get to 16, you have to provide incentives to get to 16.
Okay. Just for the benefit of, especially for our new council members, when that large-scale comes, when the property owner brings, the developer brings the large-scale to Planning Commission, if it's approved, the council doesn't...
That's correct.
Y'all won't, y'all won't have a...
Yeah, I'm booked.
Yeah, y'all won't have...
The only time it would, anything would come to council is if they were waiving street improvements and sidewalk constructions, and then that has to come to you guys.
Any variances or anything like that?
Right. And if, I believe you all get a copy of the Planning Commission packet, so you will see what the large-scale looks like when it comes through, but it only comes through the Planning Commission packet.
Right, okay. Did entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that the ordinance passed.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comment? Steve Fisher's here, if y'all have any questions.
I'm also here, if anyone has any questions. Mine's Will Kelstrom, I'm representing Steve on this.
Okay, thank you, Will. Anyone, anyone out in the lobby, guys, anyone out there need to speak to this issue? All right, seen none. Denise?
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause, carry 8-0.
Thank you, council.
Thank you all. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you. The next item is a request to rezone 1.01 acres on a piece of property that's approximately 600 feet south of the intersection of Elm Springs Road and 40th Street. You'll see it's kind of a little island in the middle of all that's already rezoned to C2. It was never rezoned to A1, and it is now part of a project that has already been to Planning Commission, and we have a large-scale development plan for this, but it couldn't move forward until this property is rezoned. We're hearing some of these rezonings on a late basis because the newspaper didn't get the public hearing notices in the newspaper for the December meeting, so they all had to be sent to the January meeting. So we got some of these a little bit out of order, but it still takes care of all that. Planning Commission recommends approval of this rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance admitting ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto, by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A1 to general commercial district C2, and declaring an emergency."
So if this does pass, that A1 changes to C2, but that C5 stays the same?
That's correct, yes. And what the C5 does, it allows them to have a location that could have a drive-up window if they wanted to. That's, we had a large-scale for that piece that didn't go through, and at this point, they didn't need to rezone it for the suspected uses they have for that piece of property. It's a commercial subdivision with several buildings on it that we've already looked at. Okay?
Make a motion, the ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone else? All right, Denise?
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Move the emergency clause to be adopted.
Second.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
No, I'm doing all right.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Just wrap over.
Yes.
Fugierus?
City council members, thank you.
Somebody, somebody needs to mute their mic, please. Somebody on Zoom.
Somebody up there needs to mute it.
Powell?
Sorry.
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Okay. Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause, carry 8-0.
The next item on the agenda is a 4.52 acre tract located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Don Tyson Boulevard and Parkway Circle. This corner was not included in Parkway Circle. The request is to rezone the property from A1 and C2 to C5. Planning Commission reviewed this request, recommends approval. This is just north of Highland Oncology. The title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance admitting ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto, by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A1 and general commercial district C2 to open display district C5, and declaring an emergency."
Move the ordinance, pass. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any other questions or comments?
I have a question. Why are the drawings that we have on our notepads not the same ones that we're actually dealing with? The last two or three have been shaded areas that are not...
You have this drawing in your packet, correct?
No, we do not.
No, it's got a different shade.
No, we do not. We didn't have the last one either.
Okay. I'm not sure what's being put in your packet.
I don't either, but it's not right for us not to have the correct drawings. How do we prepare for a meeting if we're not even, we don't have the appropriate...
Okay. I will have to go back and see what happened with that one. This is a piece of property that we've been talking about all along.
Yeah, Patsy, are we talking about the one along the overpass or to the left of it?
We're talking about the piece of property that's on the screen up there. That's where the legal description comes in.
And the last two were not right either, Patsy?
These that had this little island wasn't in there either?
That one's correct, but...
Yeah, that one's correct. We have different photos, but it's correct.
You have different photos shaded on ours.
Well, it was an entire piece, and this is the only piece that was left, okay. We are having a challenge of creating maps since we moved, and so we're going to have to address how we do this. I can't tell you that that's the reason why we had the wrong piece. The original legal description had the wrong corner started and went the wrong direction. We got that corrected on the legal description. This is really the piece of property we're rezoning, so.
We'll just, we need to get on it earlier and make sure, and work with Beth in my office, and let's make sure the right stuff's going out.
We had several issues on this agenda that had the wrong information down, and we need to just work a little bit closer to get this done. There's a lot of things going on, and not being able to address things as quickly as we can creates a problem. This is the correct piece of property right here on this drawing.
We're also trying to address the connectivity issues at the Blair Street building. Planning and city clerk, y'all have much different requirements than things that have been in that building before, and so we're going to, we're, I know Mark's guys are on it, and we're trying to address...
Multiple sheets of a plan will really take up a lot of bandwidth to open, and we do most everything digitally anymore. We don't get a lot of hard copies anymore, so.
Thanks for bringing that to our attention, Jeff, and we'll make sure that...
I don't know, maybe we need to send Patsy the agenda ahead of time so she can double-check it or something, maybe.
I don't usually get the agenda till it's already out.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, so maybe we need to coordinate before it goes out.
Yeah, we just need to make sure the attachments are right.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Also, open display district, C5.[1529.66]
a little bit more highway-oriented and more visibility because it's adjacent to major collectors and arterial streets. You can't put a car lot in it.
Right.
And this property is in the overlay district, so it will still have to meet the requirements of the overlay district as the property develops. We will get a large-scale development plan. I think we've already got a drawing for the parking lot they're looking at right now, but there's no other buildings being contemplated at this time.
The wording on H, when you get down to that, you'll see that C five is for different wording, but in our, but in our... Well, I was just telling her, on the agenda for H, C five is called a different title.
It says storefront commercial district too, yeah, okay. We need some consistency in how we do these.
But I believe we have a motion.
Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Denise.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Al.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
Okay, the next one is seven point two acres on the west side of South Fifty-Sixth Street. Do we have the right map in the...
I've got that.
Okay, we got one right, okay. We got one right, okay. This is a request to rezone this property from A one to high-density multifamily residential district MF twenty-four. Planning Commission recommends approval of this rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads in ordinance amending ordinance number thirty-three oh seven, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Spring to Arkansas and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A one to high-density multifamily residential district MF twenty-four and declaring an emergency.
Did we not look at this piece of property before that looks familiar?
We looked at the property to the north of it and rezoned it to MF twenty-four quite some time ago. I don't think we've rezoned this property. It had been before you in the last year or so, if then, I don't think it's ever been before us before.
Is the property just to the west still owned by the school district?
Yes. It's still owned by the school district, yes. We looked at that little corner up there when the property to the north was rezoned, and they retained two commercial adjacent to Fifty-Sixth Street. We had a property owner that requested that. The developer did not amend his application, and once the entire piece of property rezoned to MF twenty-four.
Right across from the Highlands Development.
It is.
This doesn't have the driveway on there. Is that, does that driveway line up with Parkway Circle or with...
The other one does.
Yeah, okay.
This one, I don't know that, there may be an old house or something on there. There hasn't been anything done with that.
Old barn.
Yeah, the other property, we had a subdivision years ago on that piece of property. The road was built and all of that, but there hasn't been anything on this piece of property.
Did we get a motion?
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Have a motion a second. Any further questions or comments? Anyone? I'm kind of trusting you guys to send them this way if they're, y'all are, I know, I appreciate that, y'all are following the agenda, so... All right, Denise.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Al.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Al.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Al.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Al.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
Okay, the next request is an amendment to a PUD that was approved back in January of two thousand and twenty. This is the second amendment we've made to this. This goes to show you that once we approve a PUD, it has to come back until, as we develop through it and get all the details. This one, the changes they are requesting, and I don't know how well you can see it on there, but I'm going to outline for you. The more significant of the changes being the removal of the fitness center, which is building five, and the townhouses, which is building eleven. The fitness center is moved into building four, adjacent to the space previously occupied by building five. The pool has now been moved into the space that previously held building five. Townhomes eleven A and eleven B have been removed, along with the small pavilion adjacent to them and replaced by building nine. Townhome eleven C is removed, and the dog park will now occupy this space. Townhomes eleven D, E, and F have been replaced by building ten. The leasing building, which was building seven, has been removed, and the leasing center will be located in the mixed-use building along Dean George Boulevard, which is identified as building one. And the pool maintenance shed and storage buildings have been removed. So all of these changes result in three, an increase of three units for a total of two hundred and thirty-four dwelling units in this, in this PUD. The density of the development will be seventeen point eight units per acre, and they had originally set it up for twenty point six, so we're still under the density that they were talking about before. All the amenities that were originally planned within the develop are still proposed. All of the bill of assurances and everything we adopted with the ones before has changed. They've just changed building types and building locations, and as they move through the project, I think it, it becomes more return on investment if they make these kind of changes to it. Planning Commission reviewed these changes and recommends approval of this revision, and the title of the ordinance reads in ordinance amending ordinance number thirty-three oh seven, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Spring to Arkansas and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from planning unit development, PUD, to revise planning unit development, PUD, and declaring an emergency. And all of those things that I just outlined will be attached to the ordinance as an exhibit so we know what it is when we get to the final document.
This is just a good example of how restrictive a PUD is once a developer decides to, to institute one, and they have to go back and go through a lot of changes through the planning department, which is much more restrictive than the standard building code. So this is an example of having to go back and get Patsy's blessing on any change, period.
Well, they have to meet what we originally designed, and what we originally put in this is what we're really talking about, yes. And this is all in writing, so as the property changes hands, if this whole project is sold to someone else, these same conditions exist with the next one, and that's why we go through such great length to make sure everything is documented with pictures, a PUD document, and the covenants that goes with it.
Yep, and any change, to Mike's point, any change requires council approval, just like we're considering tonight.
That's correct.
Well, first, planning department's approval, then comes before the council.
Well, it has to go, staff has to get it ready to go, planning commission has to approve it, then it has to come to you guys, yes. So, the whole idea is for every, to discourage changes, but changes do occur because that's what happens as you move through development in some of these big projects like this.
Patsy, I've got a question on, since this is going in the overlay district, we have specific rules for the overlay district, and then you put a PUD in the middle of the overlay district, does it, it has to meet the overlay district guidelines as well as whatever the PUD says?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
There is not design standards for multifamily in the overlay district that's different than one or standard multifamily. The sign still has to be the same, which there are no variances for, the treatment to the streets, the landscaping, all of that, so all of those layers go together to put this PUD document together, yes.
My only question was between, like, the commercial development and the residential development, I think our normal ordinance or our normal building code says that there, doesn't there have to be like a layer in between there, like a wall or a fence or screen? And then in this, it's a little bit different look, so I guess that's just to the planning commission's...
It's part of the PUD document itself, and what they were trying to create is walkability from the commercial areas to the rest of the residential development, so the screening is not the same as you would see in other things, and it's all restricted to the types of uses that they will allow. It doesn't usually have to have that screening required between that and residential. So we went through all that at the very beginning. We haven't changed any of that. There still can be privacy fences around some of the residential buildings. There still can't be any chain link fencing in any of that. None of that has changed.
I agree with Mike as far as the PUD and the accountability behind it. I don't have this map, though. Am I the only one that doesn't have this one?
I don't have it.
No, we don't have it.
Okay. Yeah, the map I got is further to the west of that.
That site plan is one that they finally put together that shows all of the changes, and you'll see little bubbles on there because I couldn't figure out what we were doing until they showed me which building was which, and so we'll get this one to you, so, but that will now become part of the ordinance itself too, so that we know which has changed all the way through. Again, a lot of this stuff is sent in the planning commission packet, and we don't duplicate it, and maybe we need to duplicate this stuff more than we have been.
Well, yeah, and the council, they may want to see more, but for me, the bottom line is they've not reduced any amenities, and your, your, your synopsis of what, you know, the change in units, the change in, you know, those, as you've described those changes, and they're not removing any amenities, that kind of handles it for me, but council might want to see.
And we're only adding three units because of the different size, the, I think they changed one building that had mostly two bedrooms to some three, and that's how we lost some different buildings, units, but only three additional units in all the changes they've made so far. And the original PUD cannot be increased, the density cannot be increased by more than fifteen percent regardless of what they want to provide. We'll watch that all the way through as we amend it from time to time to make sure we don't exceed that fifteen percent change in the density.
What was the first amendment, do you remember?
They moved a couple of buildings around, they changed, the dog park has moved a couple of times now, and then they took out one building and put in a different style. We have all of the elevations for all the buildings, and they all look the same.
Haven't changed, though.
No, haven't changed any of that stuff.
Why do they have to have these amendments? As the project moves along?
Because when we approve this, we know exactly how it's laid out, we know what the buildings are going to look like, what all the amenities are.
Why's it changed? I guess is what I'm asking.
Well, I think their marketability study gave them a reason to change the type of buildings. They decided they didn't need a separate building for the leasing building, they're including it in one of the commercial buildings, which allowed them to free up that building and add two more units to it. They moved the dog park to a better location. When you start designing detention and all those kind of things, you get into that details, sometimes things have to adjust.
They probably decided there's a bigger demand for three-bedroom units than two, so that's one of the reasons for changing their building size.
I think his exclamation on the planning commission video is that they're changing one bedroom to two bedrooms.
Yeah, I think it's one to two, not two to three, yeah. I think you're right.
No real demand for a lot.
There's too many, remember, which is which until I go back and look at all the details, but if it's going to sacrifice any of that.
Make a motion, the ordinance pass.
We have a motion a second. Any further comments or questions? Anyone? Okay, thank you. Denise?
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Al.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
The next item is a request to rezone property located at nine oh one Young Street. It's lots fourteen and fifteen of block two of Carter Edition. They are requesting to rezone this property from low-density residential district SF two to low-medium-density multifamily district MF four. Planning Commission reviewed this request, recommends approval of the rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads in ordinance amending ordinance number thirty-three oh seven, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Spring to Arkansas and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from low, medium-density single-family residential district SF two to low-medium-density multifamily residential district MF four and declaring an emergency.
So all that's SF two around that?
Right, and, but there are duplexes in several of those lots on the same side of the street, and then the ones across the street, and when this was all zoned to probably R one or R two duplexes were allowed in that district. When we transition it over to a new zoning district, which we did several years ago, those become non-conforming uses. This lot has never had anything on it, and they want to put duplexes on these two lots.
I'm going to make a motion, this ordinance pass.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion a second. Further questions or comments? Anyone? All right, Denise.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Al.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Al.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Al.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes, ma'am.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Al.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Al.
Yes.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Al.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Al.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Al.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Harriman.
Yes.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Al.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
The next item is a request to rezone one hundred and six point seven acres from A one and SF two and another A one, which is property that was just recently annexed in, to planning unit development, PUD. So I'm going to, I'm going to take a little bit of time to go through all the details
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes ma'am.
Flores.
Yes ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
The next item is a request to rezone one hundred and six point seven acres from A one and SF two and another A one, which is property that was just recently annexed in to plan unit development PUD. So I'm gonna take a little bit of time to go through all the details so that we know what's included in this PUD as we did the ones in Pure and other places like that.
Patsy, Mayor, should we announce it? I'm guessing most of the people out there are here for this one. Should we let them be aware in case they're not that we're discussing this?
Yeah, we'll give them an opportunity when, we'll go ahead and let Patsy do her thing and then we'll, we'll give everybody, like on everyone, we'll give everybody an opportunity to speak before we vote.
We ready?
Uh huh.
Okay, as I said, this is a request to do a planning of development on approximately one hundred and six point seven acres. The comprehensive land use plan designates this area for low-density residential. The property is owned by Hilton Road Real Estate LLC and at the time, there was a contract to purchase of it. All of it will be under the ownership of Hilton Road LLC. The project is designed to include six phases. The initial construction is anticipated to include phase one only but may include a combination of phase one and, I got a drawing here that tells you what the phases are, and one or more additional phases. Phase one is the largest phase and includes two street connections to Hilton Road. Phase one includes single-family duplex and multifamily units. The developer intends to begin construction as quickly as practical once construction plans are approved and our regulatory entities have approved those. The anticipated timeline is completion of phase one construction within eighteen months of city council approval with completion of additional phase each year following until all phases are completed. There is a legal description for the piece of property included in the ordinance. The project came in with a project name of Hilton Road Plan Unit Development and the developer wants to change that to Brentwood Villages.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Brentwood Villages.
Brentwood, okay.
Also a PUD?
No S, Brentwood Village.
Is it also a PUD?
It's a PUD, yes. And that will be how we refer to it from now on. All the documents will be changed for it to say Brentwood Village, okay? It still says Hilton Road on here. The development strategy was an attempt to develop this hundred and six acres with a mix of single-family homes, duplexes, and townhomes. There will be no commercial uses proposed or allowed. Developer intends to build and sell homes on the single-family lots, build and lease duplexes on the duplex lots, and build and lease the townhomes. However, the developer reserves the right to sell lots, lease homes, and sell the townhomes as market conditions warrant. The single-family residential lots, there are a hundred and seventy-one single-family residential lots, they will, they are conventional in that they will have front-load lots. The lot sizes will vary with the smallest typical single-family lot size being sixty foot wide by a hundred and thirty feet deep with an area of seventy-eight hundred square feet. Many of these blocks of these lots feature larger sixty-four foot wide or sixty-seven foot wide lots. The duplex lots, which includes a hundred and three duplex lots or two hundred and six residential units, these lots are all conventional front-load. Each duplex will include an attached garage and driveway. Lot sizes will vary typically. Duplex lots is eighty foot wide by a hundred and thirty foot deep with an area of ten thousand four hundred and square feet per lot. The townhomes is a nine point four acre lot near the northeast corner of the subdivision. The developer to build eighteen townhouse buildings. Sixteen of the buildings include six units each and two of them include four units for a total of a hundred and four residential units. Some townhomes will face the public streets. These buildings all include attached garages. Some townhouses will face the private streets. And some of these buildings will include attached garages while others will utilize on-street parking located near the front of the buildings. One block of the six townhomes includes a large common space area behind the townhouses. Again, I will say it is restricted entirely to residential use. The only use units that will be allowed in this PUD is use unit one, which is citywide public uses by right. Use unit four, cultural recreational and health facilities. Use unit eight, single-family dwellings. Use unit ten, townhouse. Use unit eleven, duplexes, and use unit thirty-four, which is a model home temporary marketing office. So the density is a hundred and seventy-one single-family lots or a hundred and seventy-one residential units. A hundred and three duplex lots, which is two hundred and six residential units, and eighteen townhouse buildings, which equals a hundred and four residential units, which is an entire project of four hundred and eighty-one residential units. The four hundred and eighty-one units on a hundred and six point seven acres equals four point five units per acre, which is equal to what an SF two zone is allowed now. There is nineteen point one acres, which is, will be allowed as green space. The minimum requirement in the code is fifteen percent. This is about seventeen point nine percent. The setbacks will include a twenty-five foot front, five sides, five interior side setback, exterior along the right-of-way will be fifteen and the rear will be twenty feet. As I said, the intent of this is to develop a mixture of single-family duplexes and townhomes in close proximity to the adjacent park and nearby schools. The development powers the natural resources along Clear Creek at the north end of the property and provide several large common open spacious areas within the interior of the development as well. The project will provide two pedestrian connections to CL, Charlie and Willie George Park, to the north, which is a primary amenity associated with the development. The park connections will include a sidewalk to be constructed along the east side of Hilton Road and a twelve-foot wide pedestrian connection near the northeast corner of the PUD. The twelve-foot wide trail runs south, runs south from the northeast corner of the subdivision through the townhome lots and several POA lots to a point near the south edge of the development. The two connections to the adjacent park, combined with internal sidewalks throughout the subdivision, will provide a high level of connectivity within the development and the adjacent park with nearby schools and with the surrounding region separate from vehicular roadways. There are other amenities to be provided in the PUD itself, which will include a gazebo, playground equipment, picnic area, dog park, and multiple green spaces. The preliminary plat includes six lots designated as park areas. The PUD layout provides single-family homes and a portion of the development near to and visible from Hilton Road. Duplex lots are located east of the single-family homes and houses at the northeast corner of the property. The applicant is not proposing a PUD to increase residential density, which greatly sees what is allowed in a conventional residential development. They are trying to get a mixture of housing development in this one area. The typical lot sizes of the smallest single-family lots in the development has an associated area of seventy-eight hundred square feet. That's only two hundred feet shy of the minimum lot size required in the SF two district. So it's a very small deduction. The typical lot size for the duplexes exceeds the width requirement for duplexes in MF twelve district and is only a hundred feet square, a hundred square feet shy of the required minimum area for duplexes in the MF four district. The proposed setbacks will allow the single-family homes to be built on sixty-foot lots in the PUD that are comparable in size and appearance to homes constructed on significantly wider lots in conventional subdivisions. The front building setback is proposed to be twenty-five feet, which is five foot less than the typical Springdale residential setback. This still provides sufficient driveway length between the street and the garage of the homes and duplexes without blocking sidewalks. The setbacks, the side setbacks are proposed to be five feet from interior lot lines rather than the eight foot. This will allow for homes to be built on the sixty-foot lots that normally would require more wider lots. Despite the reduced setback, all homes will still meet the minimum separation specified by the fire code as eaves of adjacent homes will be separated by at least ten feet. Rear setbacks are proposed to be twenty feet, a five-foot reduction compared to the typical rear setbacks in Springdale residential zoning districts. Twenty feet ensures some home, each home and duplex will have a very nice backyard and also provide room for utility easements for infrastructure. Each single-family home is required to have an attached garage with capacity for at least two vehicles. Each duplex unit is required to have an attached garage with capacity for at least one vehicle. The townhouses fronting public streets will have an attached garage. The townhouses fronting private streets include a mixture of buildings with attached garages and buildings served by on-street parking. The covenants provide requirements regarding any accessory structures to be placed on the lots. The covenants specify exterior building material requirements. And I'll move on so you can see what some of these look like. The first floor up to the second floor plate of each single-family home duplex and townhome will be a hundred percent brick, stone, or manufactured stone with no siding. The primary building materials will include brick, stone, manufactured stone, wood, and concrete siding such as Hardy brand. The developer intends to sell the single-family homes and to build, then lease the townhouses. The developer reserves the right to sell single-family or duplex lots as we talked about. They will still have to meet all the design standards that are set up in this PUD. The covenants include various provisions to ensure the pleasing appearance of the neighborhood is maintained in which are typical of many developments and I'll get into those in a minute because there is a set of covenants that is part of this document as a whole. We talked about the two pedestrian connections to Charlie and Willie George Park and twenty point three percent of the development is reserved as green space. There's a large green space area at the north end of the project along Clear Creek and adjacent to the park. There's pictures of the townhomes, the duplexes, other pictures of the townhomes, all of that. And I can go back to any of this if we need to. The home builder will be responsible for installation of one tree plot during house or duplex construction. Installation of the tree is a requirement prior to issuance of the certificate of occupancy. The developer will install trees and landscaping in common areas and curb islands where on-street parking is provided as shown on the landscaping plan. Builder and developer should provide a standard one-year warranty of each tree they install and they listed, one, two, three, four, five, six different species of trees to be used in the subdivision itself. The streets were proposed to be constructed in the subdivision include public streets with a forty-three foot wide right-of-way for areas with no parking. Public streets with forty-five point five feet wide of right-of-way parking is provided and private streets within the townhouse lot. The developer will dedicate street right-of-way and construct street improvements along the east side of Hilton Road as required to meet the master's street plan requirements, which is a minor collector. The developer will dedicate right-of-way for the north half of a future road along the south edge of the subdivision as shown on the master's street plan, but no street improvements of this project are proposed. This is the same as we've done in a lot of other subdivisions around the city when there is a major collector or a minor collector proposed. We get the right-of-way developed and then when the city determines that that street needs to be built, it becomes a capital improvement project and we don't have to go back and collect and acquire right-of-way. Two prime examples, if you go on Fifty-Sixth Street between Harbor Avenue and Elm Springs Road, you'll see where the road went through there and those subdivisions were planted with the easement for the road through there. Don Tyson Parkway was done the some way and the Renaissance subdivision, there were several people who were quite upset because they didn't know the street was going through there, but it was dedicated on the plat and we didn't have to acquire that one either. So this is standard procedure that we've done throughout the city as a whole. The project includes four street connections to Hilton Road and I'll go back to the drawings so you can see what it looks like. I don't know what drawings you all had in your packet. Four street connections to Hilton Road, two will be constructed in phase one of the development. Stubouts at the south end of the subdivision for future connection to the road shown on the location of the master's street plan. And one stubout is provided along the east end of the project just south of the townhouse lots for connection to a subdivision if it occurs to the east of this property. The project will, includes four street constructions to Hilton Road, two will be constructed in phase one. I just said that. All streets will include five-foot wide sidewalks along both sides of the road. Sidewalks along the street frontage of single-family duplex and townhouse lots will be installed by the builder during construction on those lots. The developer will construct the sidewalk along or across the green space areas and detention ponds. And those will be completed before the final plat is approved. And it can be, final plats can be approved in sections based on the phase line so that they can move forward. Overnight parking is prohibited on all streets within the development other than designated parking areas. Signage for the subdivision will consist of a monument signs at the intersections with exterior streets. The exterior of the sign will be constructed with primary stone, brick, and/or metal and developer will install landscaping along the sign in accordance with the landscape plan. Those will be put on common property and will be the responsibility of the POA to maintain those. I said the developer intends to start as soon as possible. It is not anticipated that this development will strain public services or infrastructure in the area. The park that is adjacent is within walking distance and there are several schools located near the project which would allow for people to use walkways to get to those. The covenants themselves is a declaration of covenants of assurance and restrictions. It requires the establishment of a POA for this project. It further aligns some things that we don't have in the PUD development itself but will be at the discretion of the POA to maintain. The fences, only fences constructed of wood or wrought iron may be installed. There'll be no fences allowed, there are no other fences will be allowed. All privacy fences will be constructed so that the framing shall be toward the inside of the owner's lot and shall be constructed at a height of six feet to maintain uniformity. Any fence once constructed must be maintained by the property owner who had it constructed or their successors in interest. They have a nuisance clause that said there will be no noxious or offensive activities or nuisances permitted in, on any lot or parcel. No signs can be erected on any lot, on any lot other than real estate signs and there may be some during development and construction of the subdivision. No animals shall be kept or maintained on any lot except the usual household pets, which shall be kept reasonably confined so as not to become a nuisance. And all owners shall comply with applicable laws and ordinances and regulations concerning animals. They will be required to have trash pickup through the city of Springdale as, that's the city's requirement. There will be no other access to any lot on the perimeter except through designated streets. There will be no drilling, refining, quarrying, or mining operations on any lot. No communication, mass tower structure may be installed on any lot except that satellite dishes may be installed only on the rear roof of a dwelling and shall not exceed the height of the lowest roof ridge line of such dwelling. No vehicles may be parked overnight in the streets of the subdivision. Owners shall provide sufficient off-street parking to accommodate the vehicles used by their families and guests. Furthermore, no semi-trailer trucks or commercial vehicles will be allowed to park in the subdivision either on the street or on the lot, provided however that this restriction does not apply while, during construction. No trailer, mobile home, tent, shack, or other unsightly building or structure, temporary or permanent, shall be erected or used on said lots. However, it is permissible to have a storage building in the rear yard of a dwelling provided that the square footage does not exceed two hundred and fifty square feet and is constructed in material of the same type, design, and colors of the dwelling and it must be approved, the plans must be submitted and approved by the ARC before it can go in. No recreational and camping vehicles, trailers, and boats will be stored and parked on the lots except behind the dwelling and then only enclosed in a screened privacy wood fence. All dwellings in the subdivision shall have a minimum of thirteen hundred square feet of heated air on the first floor regardless of whether the dwelling is single-story or two-story. The minimum square footage requirements is exclusive of garages, porches, patios, and decks. Irrespective of other provisions regarding amendments of these covenants, the minimum square footage cannot be amended without the express approval of the developer and the city. There shall be no dwelling erected on a lot other than a detached, single-family dwelling having at least a two-car enclosed garage, a duplex, having at least a two-car garage or attached townhome units. All plans for improvements to be constructed on each lot shall be first submitted for review and approval by the ARC and that has to be submitted in writing to the city before a building permit can be issued. As we talked about, the exterior of the buildings, the materials we've already talked about, it's in the covenants again. Sofits and fascia may be covered with steel, aluminum, or concrete composite materials. All roof pitches shall be a minimum of six twelve. No metal roof shall be permitted. Roofs shall be covered with shingles using architectural composition or better. All lots shall be maintained, mowed, and kept free of noxious weeds whether they be improved or unimproved. Upon construction of dwelling, the owner shall saw the entire lot, provided however that this section shall not apply to developer during construction. If owner allows grass to grow such that is more than four inches high, developer or the association shall have the right but not the obligation to have it mowed without giving notice to the owner and shall charge seventy-five dollars or the amount it costs developer or association to have it mowed, whichever is greater. Leans can be placed on the property. All these covenants will be run with the land and be binding on all parties and their accessories, heirs, and the sons. This is good for a thirty-year timeframe and then it will have to be revisited by the city and the developer, or the association after thirty years. No persons who is required to register as a sect offender shall be allowed to rent, reside in, own, or occupy any lot or dwelling in the subdivision. They are establishing a homeowners' association. All lot owners must be members of the association and each shall automatically become a member of the association upon the conveyance of the lot to him or her. The developer shall have four votes per lot, as long as the developer owns them, everyone has one vote. It sets up a, an assessment that has to be paid on an annual basis, the purpose of those assessments, how they change all that stuff, what the assessments can be used for. And I can go into all those details if you want to know all that stuff. But detention ponds that are on the site will have the response, the association will have the responsibility of maintaining the detention ponds. Then it addresses the membership rights to the common areas and all that as part of that covenant. And I think that's it. Now, you're gonna say, do you want me to go over that again?
I'm a little slow. Explain to me exactly what's gonna be in phase one.
Well, if you, the colored picture here shows you.
I can't tell from the pictures. Explain to me what is.
Okay, it's some of the single-family, some of the duplexes.
How many, how many single-family and how many multifamily?
Okay. I didn't count them. I just looked at the map and the areas that's green is the phase one and some of that other area that is phase two. I didn't count them.
I think it'd be helpful for our consideration to know exactly what's gonna be included in this phase one.
Well, you can, you can look at the drawing up there and see how many of those that are single-family and duplexes that are highlighted as phase one.
How many are phase one are single-family, how many are duplexes is all I want to know.
The lots that are over to the eastern side of the subdivision, let's see, do I have a, do I have a laser here?
Well, if we don't know, we don't know.
Well, the developer will have to tell you that. I didn't calculate that number of lots and stuff. So, planning commission reviewed this PUD and recommends approval. The title of the ordinance reads, an ordinance admitting ordinance number thirty-three oh seven, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, on the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A one and low-medium-density, single-family residential district SF two and agricultural district A one to plan unit development PUD and declaring an emergency.
What was the vote?
It was a unanimous vote.
And Brian, are you, you're gonna wait on an answer? Get us a, on that number Mike asked for?
Yeah, I think it's probably about thirty duplexes.
Patsy, 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 don't leave.
Come on up.
I'd like Patsy to stay for just a minute.
Okay.
I think it's approximately about thirty duplexes and seventy single-family. And I'm Kevin Riggins.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
So Patsy, I'd like to focus on single-family development.
Okay.
Why would we want to downsize our SF two lots to a sixty-foot wide lot with only a five-foot side building setback?
Well, one of the things that's allowed in a PUD is to give that kind of flexibility.
I understand, but why would we want to do that?
And let me point out that the size of the lot is only being reduced by two hundred square feet.
Yeah, but they're sixty-foot wide, what's the typical width of a SF two?
Seventy. Okay, and then on the duplex lots, they're only being reduced in size by a hundred square feet. So they're pretty close to. Now, if you go look at it, other, some of the other.
So why don't they just do seventy-foot with eight-foot side setback?
Well, you can't get as many lots in there. Not everyone.
But that's not my fault.
Well, not everyone is looking for a lot with that size in there too. It allows them to create a mix of, a different kind of housing with a quality house on that lot and a smaller lot. I think you'll see that people are looking for a different kind of housing. Not everybody wants a lot that they have to take care of.
You just approved not long ago that's under construction now. What's the width on those lots?
The ones in cottages at the creek have the similar sized lots in them, yes. And they're sixty-foot lots.
Harbor Meadows is one again that.
Right. And some of those in Harbor Meadows are fifty-foot lots.
Right.
Yeah.
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 Patsy, where's the northern, the northern tree line that goes south of the park? Where is that compared to Phase Two?
Okay, you're going to have to get Brian to answer those really technical questions. If you can see it, it's, and I, the pointer doesn't work. Does somebody have a?
We don't have, we have one map, so we don't have all these.
Okay. Brian, can you show?
You're talking about the north edge?
Blake, you're on Zoom. Can you show them where that tree line is on the north edge?
The development south of the park, the southern part of the park.
Well, let's go back to the aerial.
Yeah.
See where that edge is coming out of the park? That whole area up there is being reserved as common space. You see where I'm talking, you see where the, where the soccer fields are and you go right across the street and you see that tree line going through there? That's part of the common area.
Is that part of the park right now?
No. The edge of the park, the edge of the park is just a little bit on the south side of that street and in this property, it butts right up to it. But the area that's right adjacent to the city property is being retained as open area because that's the area that Clear Creek comes through. It has some natural vegetation and they're not clearing that off.
Okay, so nothing, nothing's going to go there?
Right. On the, yeah, if I had a pointer that worked, I could show you where it is. Okay, 32 duplexes and 92 single-family will be in the first phase.
32 and what?
32 and 92.
Okay, that's a difference in 70, okay.
Done with me?
Any other questions for Patsy right now?
I, I got more.
Okay.
I got plenty for you, Patsy, here.
Okay.
And this is a good map to show. So, for the future, the future road that we talked about south of Butterfly?
I'm sorry?
The future road that we talked about that's south of Butterfly?
Well, it will be all the way at the south edge of this, it's shown on the master street plan that it would-
South of Butterfly.
Yeah, it's south of Butterfly. The next phase of that subdivision, if it is developed more, we'll have to develop, we'll have to donate right away, the same as this one does.
Okay, and so then that road would have to go, I mean-
South edge is that, that property line, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes.
And so that would extend all the way to Haverton and down to Butterfield?
The master, well, did you get that? Right here, okay.
There we go.
I'm no good at this. The road will go, the dedication of the right-of-way will be through here and the master street plan shows that it would extend all the way over here to Butterfield Coach, this is Hilton, and go over and tie into Haverton when it's extended over there. There is a picture of the master street plan. I think we included that, too, so you could see what it looked like. See, the master street plan shows that at the bottom as a minor collector all the way across. If you look at the city's street grid, we have a major collector and then we have a minor collector so that we can take all of the traffic from a subdivision to a minor collector and get it to them.
We're looking at this right? And I'm right? This is Butterfield Coach?
Uh huh.
This is Don, this is Hilton?
That's Hilton.
And this is Haverton.
Uh huh, and it, it, yes, and it shows it going all the way out here and tying in at some of the locations. The master street plan says that for things identified on the master street plan, that there's not an existing street. The exact location will be identified as the project is designed. What this really does is reserve a corridor, but we're asking for half of it to be done on the south side of the subdivision. Now, I know there was a question about people using Butterfly to cut through to get to other areas. I'm not going to stand here and tell you that nobody will cut through, but it stands to reason that if you're going to go very often, you will go to those streets that get you straight to Don Tyson Parkway rather than trying to cut through a subdivision. And I think we went back and added some street calming through Butterfly by putting up some stop signs so you can't just zip all the way through.
And as far as, and it's something you can probably answer, Mayor, that the future road that we're just talking about now that cuts from Butterfield all the way to Haverton, would that be a city council priority as far as budgeting and such, or how do we address the, the speed of building that?
Going to, you know, that could be part of a future bond project, Kevin.
Takes money.
But I don't see, I don't see that being a, a high priority until development and until developers begin to develop the, uh, south of that property. I'm just telling you what I see. I think, I think it'll be, I think it'll be a while.
So, on the, right there in the center where you got the dark spot and it looks like it's cut around it, what is that?
That right, that area right there?
No, to your right there.
This right here?
Yes.
That's property that is not owned by this developer.
Okay.
That's, that's existing homes right now.
Yeah, and it's zone day one. Yeah.
Did I hear you correctly that there's not going to be any street improvement along Hilton?
No, they will do Hilton Road, their half of the street, the full length of the piece of property, all the way down to the southern edge of this property. So, it will be, you know, in the areas where it butts up to where the subdivision is already there, it's completed, they'll do, their half on that southern portion of it and as that property develops on that other side, they'll build their half of it, too, and we'll get Hilton extended that way.
They'll, they'll be skipping the portion of the land they don't own, though, right? So, it won't be all the way down.
Well, I think that's an area we need to talk about of going ahead and getting a bill across through there so that there's not a gap. And we haven't, we haven't got into all the street-
What do you mean, the city does that or the developer?
Well, we could work out some kind of a partnership where their, their construction company does it and the city reimburses the cost for that if that's what you guys want to do because that way we don't pick up another, another project and it's a lot cheaper to do it that way than it is to do it as a separate project. We've done that in other locations where we've partnered to get gaps filled in.
Yeah, we just have to look at it and see what kind of-
That's usually only complete on both sides of the street.
Well, and they, they could widen it out through there so that the travel lanes are the right width, but it may not have sidewalk on that side.
That could possibly be-
Do we already have a right-of-way on that park that we, they don't know?
I don't think we would.
So, we'd have to acquire a right-of-way?
You're the one committed to that, not me.
Unless that property owner saw a benefit going ahead.
I think Brian wants to address the road.
Oh, sorry, Brian. Go ahead.
Yeah, Brian Moore with Engineering Services. The, the developer also owns the west side of the road and is completing Hilton Road Phase Two right now. That actually gives another cut-through, if you will, to Butterfield Coach Road.
Are you talking about here?
Yes, yes. And they also own the 10 acres to the south of that which will give a, which will connect to the Hilton Road to the north. So, it, it actually, you know, people down there will probably go directly west and not go up to Butterfly, so.
Right.
And, and since it's both sides of Hilton, you know, several sides or several areas will be, actually be both sides that this developer will do. It's just two separate projects, if that makes sense at all.
Okay.
So, you're saying there's another through street?
There's another through street.
Where that construction's going right now?
Yes, yes.
Well, you'll, hey, we'll get your, we'll get you in just seconds. Let us go ahead and get, any other questions for, before we let the public?
So, I got, I got, I'm sure everyone else did, too. I got a lot of phone calls and emails about this. I'm just trying to get some of these answered, or questions answered.
Kevin, I'm having trouble understanding you. I'm sorry.
No problem.
It's probably just me.
I got a lot of emails as I'm sure everyone else did and also phone calls, so I'm just trying to get some of these questions answered. Patsy, what can we do about discouraging drive-through traffic through Butter, is it Butterfly?
Well, he, he just said that there's going to be another street going through.
At, at the moment, I guess.
Immediately.
Yeah.
I mean, we put some stop signs through there to stop the traffic so it's not direct. We can put up no through street, you know, through tra, no through traffic allowed. Police department, I assume, could monitor some of that. We don't put speed bumps on public streets because of the problems it creates, but that's how we've discouraged it in other places where it's happened.
Are the new streets fully, did, before starting?
Can you come up to the mic and say that, please?
Existing Phase Two of Hilton, that street will actually be approved to Hilton Drive before we start construction of this project. So, there will be an access.
Thank you.
So, there'll be an additional access over to Butterfield Coach?
Correct.
Is it going to be a subdivision, regular subdivision street, or is it going to be a different type of street?
Is it regular, state's, I mean, is you? Sorry. I mean, as you know, I mean, public streets, the regular, regular, single-family road, and I can't do it, Blake probably knows them off the top of his head because he's better than I am, but, you know, they can handle up to X number of cars per day and that's what they're for. And I would tell you that, that it's not near the maximum of what a, a regular, single-family street. And if somebody's got the code book, we can look and see what that number is. It's probably 6,000 cars a day or 8,000 cars a day.
Brian, can you kind of describe where that road is on that picture?
Sure, sure, sure. Okay. Have you been out there at all?
No.
Okay, so where all of the new, where all of the new, uh, construction is, so if you take, if you go into Butterfield, from Butterfield Coach Road, if you go in there and you just, you jog down about 250 feet and then that road will go straight all the way out to Hilton Road. So, it, they, okay, see where the south end, which is, which is to your right? The south end of this development, they own the, just to the west, they also own the 10 acres there. So, in the middle of that 10 acres will be a street, okay? I don't like pointers.
What up, Chris? Brad? It goes all the way to Butterfield, right?
There we go. So, this 10 acres right here they have, and then this, this is Hilton Road, which was, I think, 30 acres. And so, so Butterfield Coach is right here. It'll come through and then there will be two roads that hit Hilton from those two developments. And actually, I think we're turning in it for the March meeting for this, this 10 acres right here. The other's actually under construction. They've cut the streets and everything. So, so, and what Kevin was trying to convey was that this and one connection will be done before the construction on this has even started. So, there will be two outlets to Butterfield Coach Road. Does that help you, Brian? Sorry, I kind of went off on a different tangent there.
It, it does, but I think the concerns that we've been hearing as a council is that you're increasing traffic through a subdivision. It almost acts like an arterial. And that, that's been the most concerns that I've heard. And I don't, I don't think those people that live in that subdivision of Butterfly want to have an additional 450 lot, which would be two times that is quite a bit of people driving right through their subdivision just so they could access Butterfield Coach. And I, and I think that's some of the concerns that, that we've been hearing.
I think the question is how many of those people will actually do that?
That's correct.
And it is a public street. I mean, we can't-
That is correct.
But that's, I mean, it's a valid concern. And it's some concerns I had early on when we first, but I think they've, it's just me. I think they're, they're doing all they can do. I mean, they, they have a right to develop the property and I think it's, I think it's, I think the PUD looks great to me.
Just to answer your question about volumes, a low-volume local street, which is those interior streets, are designed to handle 500 cars a day. The high-volume ones, which are the ones that are on the, it says from 5 to 5,000 cars a day, and a minor collector is anything over 5,000 cars a day. I don't think we see that kind of volume on those streets from those subdivisions.
I drove that Butterfly and I drove the same distance on, on, to get over to Don Tyson. If I was going to Fayetteville, it saved me a minute going through Butterfly, you know, following the speed limit. But I, I feel most people that are going to Springdale would choose the Don Tyson interchange so they're not going through 20 mile an hour subdivision, you know, hitting three stop signs. That's just the way I think.
I would, I would think a lot of people even going to Fayetteville Randall would, would choose Don Tyson because they want to go all the way to, to 265.
Well, most likely they're going to choose his new street that's going through the, the south end, is what I, is the way I see it, just by going and driving it myself.
I think they're going to prefer to get to, to 265 rather than to Butterfield Coach, is what I'm saying.
Right. Yeah.
Brian, Kevin, would, what is going to be in place to discourage large vehicle traffic such as dump trucks, heavy equipment hauling and all that stuff from cutting through Butterfly?
What we did in Phase One of Hilton is we actually blocked off Butterfly, tried multiple different things, ended up, you know, blocking it off pretty well. We'll do the same thing. We can continue, well, actually, at that point, we can't, but heavy equipment will run down Hilton Road as we're doing this development and that's the way it'll come in and they would have no reason to go through any local street at all.
Well, as the developer, you've got some sway with the people driving those trucks.
Absolutely, yeah. They'll, they'll come down Hilton Road.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And, and that's what I want people who are going to be speaking tonight to, to understand.
Are y'all ready to hear from folks who have come to speak to this? Sure. We'll open it up to, to you all, the, the citizens who came and we just, again, just like our public comments, we ask that you start by stating your name and address. Thank you. And, and let's try, we want to hear everything, every point everybody wants to make, but let's try and not get too repetitive, okay?
Stephen Fedorko, 4048 Butterfly Avenue, two houses up from Hilton Road. Like to make one point. I, I have some written comments, so I won't go too long this time. I tend to be a little lengthy. But the gentleman here about dump trucks and Hilton, this is an aside, 25 dump trucks went through Butterfly Avenue every five minutes in the morning when they started building on Hilton Place. I called the city, I called several places till I got a hold of code enforcement and then it was, they sent me to somewhere else and they were tracking mud through there like crazy. Then they stopped, then they routed it another way. Just saying.
So, when they routed it another way, that solved the problem?
It did, but then he said they blocked it. Yeah, because I called and had that done. But, you know, it's not like they were out there first blocking it. Anyway, let's say one thing. Councilman Watson brought up a really good point early on of why would we want to do that? Allow all these, you know, shrink the lots. That's a valid point. I'll touch on that in a minute. Okay, this is, to me, this is a case of just because you can do something doesn't mean you should do it. That's the situation. This PUD may meet all of the requirements, legal requirements, but it's not in the best interests of the citizens and the city of Springdale. The city council, you guys, are tasked with guiding Springdale into the future. What kind of a city do you envision? Okay, from what I've seen, just in this rezoning, you want all multifamily housing here. You want all rentals. I didn't see anything changing anything to single-family housing. So, here's where we are today. These are some statistics I got from the Census Bureau. Home ownership, owner-occupied homes, the average in the United States, 65% owner-occupied homes. The average in Arkansas, 65%. The average in Springdale, 50%. In this would be 35%. So, to me, that's disproportionate. It's not even average for the state or the country. So, do you want a city of rentals? Because that's where you're heading in this direction with all these multifamily housings. Certainly, there's a need, but the American dream to me is, and for most people, is homeowner occupied housing. You want to own your home. You feel anchored to a city. You, you feel pride in ownership when you have your own place. So, right now, if they're saying that, oh, we need more multifamily, I disagree. If you look at real estate right now, the inventory is extremely low in Springdale. Every house that goes up for sale, be it used or brand-new, is sold in no time. I know this personally because I've been helping a young couple try to find a house. We would go, drive all over Springdale. They want to live in Springdale. They'd make an offer, there were five backup offers to that house over a weekend, and they, they didn't get anything. They actually live in a, now, in Haberton Ridge, which is just, uh, a little bit east of this one, northeast. They live in a duplex, they pay 1,100 bucks a month rent, they did make an offer on a new house there, and their mortgage will be 1,100 dollars. They're, they're going to buy their own home there. So I don't think it's about cost, because new housing can be affordable in this, in this, uh, city. In fact, Arkansas has one of the lowest cost of living in the country in housing costs, which is good. I heard earlier about all the businesses coming in, that's bringing more people, more income, that's great, uh, all for development. But this thing is a monster that's inappropriate for that area. I don't, you know, according to the, the specs on it, it's Shangri-La out there, you know, it's gonna have all these things. But really, my neighborhood, Butterfly, and the, the one, Grand Valley Meadow and Grand Valley, and the new Hilton Place, they all have the same kind of requirements as this PUD, as far as building and, and things like that. But, uh, why do that cram so many houses into this 106 acres? If, if you just kept the entire thing that they, that Patsy talked about, all those requirements, and just said SF2, you would not hear a word from anybody in our neighborhood. We're all on board with that, SF2, single-family housing, nice quality, they'll sell. There's, there's a huge demand for housing, okay? Yeah, by putting so many rentals out there, it affects real, realtors, people who make their living selling real estate. If you have no inventory, there's nothing to sell, they have no, no job, no income. So it does impact jobs. This PUD is too dense, in my opinion. Although it says it's 4.5 units per acre, in reality, you've got about 16 acres of unbuildable land, that's a creek. Okay, it meets the legal definition of a green space. But had that green space been owned by the city, they would have had to put 15 point something acres somewhere within that PUD. You follow my reasoning here? It could have been, um, 15 acres of swampland, and they'd call it a green space. If you subtract out the, the 16 acres, you get a density that's more like, um, 5.34 units per acre. So, anyway, 481 units, um, in this space is a lot. That area, I don't know if you've all seen it or toured the area, I know Mr. Overton has, I spoke to him about that. I don't, if you looked at that beautiful area out there, and then could foresee all these duplexes, townhouses, it's not appropriate for that area. You've already talked about the traffic, and I'm not, and I passed out a little map there. That road that he keeps talking about on the map, it's number 2, I think, it's called the Albright Road Extension. And, now, if they built that road ahead of time so people could go that way to get to Fayetteville, that'd be great, I mean, as a minimum, but I still think there's too many houses in there. Anyway, SF2 is about four units per acre, if you had 106 acres, times four is 424 single-family dwellings. That's plenty. 424 is still a lot, but hey, that's good, you don't need 480 something high-density housing in there. To me, it just feels like the developers trying to push the limits on this PUD. They're shrinking the lots a little bit, not a lot, five feet here, 10 feet there, to cram as many units in there as possible. I totally agree with Mr. Watson, why do you need to do that? Why can't you have just the normal SF2 in there? And to answer Mr. Overton's question, if you look on that map, he wanted to know about where are the single-family units and the duplexes? The single-family units are all going to be towards Hilton Road, so we won't see any duplexes from Butterfly. And all the duplexes are in the back and to the south, which is good. I mean, that, I thank the developer for doing that, at least they'll be kind of consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. But, uh, it's still gonna be massive, massive development, traffic, crime, you know the story, all of this other stuff. So this PUD, another thing, um, about this, I think it would set a, a bad precedent for the city. I see you're all voting to have multifamily everywhere, where's the single-family housing going? If, if you approve this on 106 acres, the next guy's gonna come along with 200 acres and say, "Hey, I want to put in there too," and jam as many units as possible. I don't think that's smart growth for this city. That's my opinion. One more page.
You're fine, thank you.
Oh, yeah, Haberton Ridge is a, a PUD, just, like I said, east and a little bit north. Brand-new housing, duplexes, not bad, not bad, but if you drive through there, the, uh, if you look at the rentals, the duplexes versus the single-family housing, there's a big difference in how they're up-kept. The people, not everybody, but, uh, the people, their houses, all very nice and neat, the duplexes, not so much, which just goes to pride of ownership, that's why I'm, you know, all for single-family housing. Okay, to me, a PUD is not what's needed here. The city planners were wise when they created the master growth plan for the city. They envisioned single-family dwellings on the property in question, that's on your master plan. All of the surrounding neighborhoods are SF2, aside from the geographically-isolated Haberton Ridge PUD. I'm gonna read something, not much, just a little bit. Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The Comprehensive Land Use Plan is a guide to decision-making by the Planning Commission, the City Council, and the Mayor. As the Planning Commission and the City Council work with the plan, making development decisions, their most difficult problem is measuring individual desires against private rights and adopted common purposes. The citizens of Springdale should remember that they too become joined together under the city's common purposes by choosing Springdale as a place to live. This is out of your, Springdale, got it off your webpage. Spring officials have the responsibility of governing the city in accord with common purposes established through the democratic process. Their decisions must be fair and equitable to the private property owner, but they must also be made with full regard to the protection and achievement of the city's common purposes. There are times when private decisions will interact with economic and social conditions to cause unexpected development that changes the development trends in the area. That's what we have here, you know, unexpected trends, more influx of.
Yeah, you're fine.
Okay. Residential land use goals, protect the positive aspects of neighborhood character throughout the city. Appropriate locations for single-family and multifamily residential development should be provided based on accessibility, site suitability, utility availability, neighbor. Assure safety of neighborhoods through the design of streets that discourages residential neighborhoods, and by excluding from those uses that generate non-residential traffic, traffic. Development, because as it stands, there's no place for to go. If they, if you're living at the south end of this, in all those, um, duplexes, and you want to get to Fayetteville, without the other street, the new street that Albright, uh, extension being built, you're gonna go through Butterfly. I know. And that's not exaggerating. So, the other goal is stabilize property values and maintain the integrity of the neighborhoods by protecting residential neighborhoods from non-residential influences and providing buffers between residential and non-residential uses. Oh, that one's okay. And then your policy, update zoning and subdivision ordinances periodically, which you're doing right now, and incorporate needed changes to allow builders and developers to develop housing that meets the needs of the city's diverse population and income situation. Suggest to the City Council any changes in zoning or subdivision requirements. That's what you're doing right now, today. Just one, a couple more things. General land use, encourage land use, uses that are compatible and result in a balanced and efficient overall development pattern. Land uses should be arranged to minimize situation in which development on certain properties detracts from the enjoyment and value of surrounding and nearby properties. That's an important sentence there. Land use compatibility and potential adverse impact to other land use types should be considered in the city's development review and approval process, including factors such as noise, excessive light, traffic, et cetera. This is all out of your, or your guiding tenants, whatever you like to call them. So, I'll, I'll wind it up here. I'm not opposed to development at all. If I were, I wouldn't be living in Springdale, I, I bought in a new development on Butterfly and Grand Valley. I retired from state government in Oregon a few years ago. I could move anywhere I wanted to in the United States, I had nothing tying me down. I did research, Arkansas kept coming up as one of the top destinations to retire in and live in, and I looked at all over northwest Arkansas specifically, because I liked it, and settled on Springdale. I like the town, I support the town, and I'd, I'd hate to see it turn into a massive rental town as opposed to single-family dwellings. Economy is great, uh, Mr., I forgot his name, uh, earlier talked about, economics is all looking up, even with this pandemic, we're still growing, it's a great town to live in. And this development would certainly impact my enjoyment of living in Springdale. And, um, all I could say is, please maintain the integrity of the area I live in, and deny this rezoning request as. But if it was SF2, full speed ahead, not a problem. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve, appreciate it. Okay, someone else, I know there was another gentleman that wanted to speak earlier, and I asked him to wait, there, here he comes. Okay. Wait till you get up to the mic, and please give us your name and address.
My name is Roger Preby, I live at 3972 Butterfly in Grand.
Are you, are you comfortable dropping that mask? We're having.
Yeah, I could do that.
That'd be great.
What's, what's your name again?
Oh, I hate wearing these things anyway.
Give us your name and address again, please.
Okay, my name is Roger Preby, I live at 3972 Butterfly in Grand Valley Meadows subdivision. And I just, I, I just live, uh, right by Steve, really, I just live a, a couple of houses away from, from Hilton Road here. And, um, on the left side of the map is where the new, um, uh, Collector Street, we, I've been calling it Electric Avenue South, because it goes from there all the way over to crossover. And, um, this will take a lot of effect off the, um, traffic.
Electric Avenue, just so nobody's confused, Electric Avenue is quite a bit north from here.
No, it's, 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 actually, it's only, uh, it's, they're both a half a mile from Don Tyson.
It's north of Don Tyson Park.
Yep, and, and this new, new street is a half a mile south of Don Tyson. And, I would definitely use this every day. The subdivision he's building right now, you see the little curvy line there? That's Butterfly Avenue, that's headed north to south there, and subdivision he's building is just to the right of that. And he talks about he's building an, a relief street for us, but that's six, 690-degree turns through probably four stop signs. So that's not gonna be used as any kind of a cut-through at all. Now, uh, concerning the, the, the left portion of that yellow line, the top portion of that line, and the right portion of that line, there's no exits out of there. Every one of those streets will end in a dead end. That property there in the middle, that's not even hooked up to city water. Those people have, um, large animals on their property. Now, if you're gonna do all the mucking around the dirt and digging and stuff like that, how's that gonna affect their wells and their septic tanks? Okay, I'll stay on course here. I'm the guy that kind of started this, I'm the guy that, um, I'm the person who mailed you the report about our concerns over the property, PUD property, and I wanted to take my mask off anyway, because I wanted to show you my 73-year-old face and tell you this is the first time I've been out in public since last March. All right, I do have extra copies of the report, if anybody would like to see them or go through them or anything, or have you.
Same thing you mailed out?
Yes, same thing, all right, so you got a, got a good idea. All right, and, um, I know we got a lot of different neighbors here today, that's really good, we're a very active organization about this, because we all did our homework when we first moved over here. You know, I, I, before I looked around, I wanted to know where the nearest police station was, fire station, I wanted to know if there was a bus line, I even wanted to know where the water lines and things like that were, so, you know, now, everything, and I did my homework, everything was, was single-family, and that's why I bought down there. And now, right now, he's selling homes in that new division, new subdivision, and he's still building, and those people there don't even have a clue yet that this is, is coming up, you know? They probably, they've, they've done their homework too, so they, they think this is still rated, you know, as single-family. Okay, the development map we see on screen, oh, actually, we don't, we don't have the street map up there, can we get that up there?
Patsy, can you go back to the, the layout? Sorry, I thought you had it back there with you.
There it is.
There we go, thank you.
All right, you know, some, this is part of the developer's bad hand. He doesn't own that middle section of property there. That's Hilton Road on the left, that's the only exit out of the, out of that subdivision at all, really. Oh, now, if he owned that property, he could send some, most of the, he's only got two streets going out of that property to where the major collector out is, at the south portion of it. But he's got four streets headed out to Hilton, because he, he doesn't own that middle section. So, and if that isn't gonna be, you know, that pretty much dooms us in the future here for, you know, that'll always be that way. All that profit, all that traffic will definitely be sent onto there. That plan is premature for the existing road infrastructure. It's been computer-generated to fill the maximum number of units it can fit on the grid, and it doesn't take account, into account, the surrounding stress on neighborhood traffic ingestion, damage to the Clear Creek flood plain, nor does it take into account the City of Springdale Master Street Plan, map, which includes the future street coming. Or, you know, there's a little diagonal line running through there, those are two high-voltage power lines running through the property, and there's no right-of, uh, right-of-way service road beneath it. Any homes, any homes that, within 200 feet of that line will probably sell for a third less. By my reckoning, I think by the time he gets to Phase 5, he's not gonna be building down there at all. All right, only two streets exit south to where the major traffic route should be, should be built first, because then they could take it all the way over the crossover. If this plan is allowed to proceed, it will forever dump all the east-to-west roads of traffic onto Hilton Road, and that'll condemn Butterfly in our subdivision as the major east-west traffic route forever, even long after the Collector Street is eventually built. And, like I said, look at the map, all their other roads are just dead ends. Hilton to the south, Clear Creek to the north, Rind to the Fields, and all the other directions. The only routes out of the area are north onto Hilton, or west down Butterfly, Butterfield Coach. As I mentioned, my wife and I live right there, just a few houses to the left of the top portion of that plan. This is the east edge of the city limits. Every job, every employment opportunity, shopping center, restaurant, and entertainment district lies to the west. Whenever we, we just live right there. Whenever we pull out of our driveway, whether we're headed for Springdale, Fayetteville, XNA, or Chicago, we got to go west to get anywhere, as will all the other 1,000 new vehicles this PUD will bring with 401 units, each making 200, two trips a day, plus 25% additional traffic from the outsiders coming in, visitors, commerce, deliveries, trade, service vehicles. But honestly, I'm not here to talk about the park and the envi, but I'm here to talk about the park and the environment. My house backs up to Clear Creek. From my deck, I couldn't even drive a golf ball across Clear Creek flood plain. It's a huge, grassy, evergreen, and shrub-filled woodland. Near the creek stands a canopy of tall trees. Some are at least 100 years old, and they almost completely block the sunlight. Outside of the forest path through Charlie and Willie George Park, ours is the largest, and it's the only remaining wildlife habitat in southeast Springdale, enclosed behind our subdivisions and our neighboring ones. There's nothing else like it remaining in that section of the town. It's a woodland forest, two miles along Clear Creek, covering 56 acres, a wildlife corridor with herds of deer, fawns, rabbits, foxes, squirrels, turtles, and even beaver. Currently, the only trail in southeast Springdale, in southeast Springdale, listed on the Northwest Arkansas Trails.org map, is a little trail through the forest in Charlie and Willie Park. There isn't, and that's it. That's from Robinson on down all the way to the city limits. Now, we know the master plan will include a trail running along the north side of Clear Creek from Lake Fayetteville onto Crossover Road, behind our neighborhood, up through the park, and ending a mile northeast into the third, if you, okay, this is a PUD, this is the third PUD cottage at Clear Creek. Now, unfortunately, this PUD plan narrows, extremely narrows, the creek's wildlife corridor. It'll have a huge detention pond there. It's going to be visible from the road, and then there's going to be a playground, pedestrian bridge over the creek, 12 feet wide here, and a string of apartment buildings permanently choking the corridor off the park forest. Those animals need a little bit of room to range. It'd be nice to see them in the forest and park. Now, none of us know how far south Hilton Road is ever going to be extended or where it ends, but someday, this road will be the City of Springdale's southern gateway entrance to the city and the park. You couldn't have ever built all this without dreaming of it. We love the park. So make it beautiful. Instead of this plan where roads just dead end, the empty fields, and every street just lead, you see, just leads through our subdivision, if you read my plan, you know our recommendations. You build a beautiful park, but city planning ignored Clear Creek, and they used it for a drain. The area's growing, change is rapid, but this plan wipes out a lot of dreams forever. So reject this plan. Fix it. Preserve the wildlife. What I want you to do is expand the park. I want you to take it down to the south part of there. Take over the flood plain of it, and then turn that into a prairie grassland. You know, there will be times it'll be wet, but this is Arkansas. Most time creeks just dry up. So embrace Clear Creek. Your grandkids will thank you forever.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
I know there are some others here. Anyone who'd like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
I guess I got to take all my gear off.
Absolutely. If you're, as long as you're comfortable. You're pretty well-distanced.
Okay, I know you guys are probably tired and ready to go home, so I'll make this really quick. Couple things on here, basically. You know, you wouldn't think everybody would cut through Butterfly.
Could you get a name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Chris Geringer. I live on 3784 Butterfly Avenue. I'm just a couple houses up from Rogers. And I hope you'll look at what Rogers wrote. Everything in here is really excellent. He did a lot of research on that, and also with Steve, what he also wrote too. They're excellent. And I, of course, live on Butterfly also, and you wouldn't think there would be a lot of cut-through on Butterfly. And I, even though I knew it was a cut-through street when I moved on two and a half years ago, I really didn't think about it because Hilton actually dead ends to gravel road and farms down there, so I didn't really think about it. When Britton built their houses along with Rousen there, they didn't put any stop signs or any speed limits or anything in Butterfly. They left it blank. So we had cars going 50, 60 miles up Butterfly. It was really fast. I finally went to the city and got some stop signs and speed limit signs to stop it, and then I guess Riggins, I believe, also put up some extra stop signs there because people will still, Butterfly had none on actually Butterfly, and we had people still going 50, 60 miles an hour, and I'd yell at every single one of them. Okay? Got a lot of families, a lot of families in that area. Elias lives on the corner between Hilton and Butterfly. I was talking to him the other day about it too, and he said, you know, you wouldn't believe how many people cut through Butterfly. I said, really? Why would they? I mean, Don Tyson is so much faster. Just go up Don Tyson is faster. You don't have the stop signs, just like you guys said. Makes more sense. He goes, no, I watch them because I wait for my kids to come home from school on the bus, and I watch them. They come to the school, come up our things, and through it just to go to Butterfly Coach. You know, we would think Don Tyson would be better to go to, but people do cut through. Now, with all these units, 481 units, you're looking at least probably 1,000 people. Some people might have three people in them, some one, but you know, you're going to have around 1,000 to 1,500 people. That's a lot in our area. Also, I got a good question to ask you guys is, I mean, how's it going to look there? Is it going to be a piece of attractiveness over there? There's cow farms, country farms, there's horses up the street. Seriously? Do you want Springdale to be PUD after PUD after PUD? And again, I get why the builders are trying to squeeze so much in every piece of land. It's money. Money, 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 money. And most of this stuff is going to be rentals, so they're going to be very well off, the builders. And I get that, why they want to do that. But how about Springdale? How about what it looks like? I go up the street to Don Tyson, and there's five horses up there. I take my grandkids up there. It's right on Don Tyson, but we stop and we feed those horses carrots and apples all the time. That's what I like to see. That's what I like to see. This, with everything jam-packed in there and everything, and people are going to buy, investors are going to buy the houses to rent because they're small houses to rent and everything. So there'll be a lot of rentals, so you know what rentals are about, basically. And again, to me, look at the picture of it. How do you think that's going to look there? Okay? We bought houses in Grand Valley Meadows. Most of those houses now sell from, you know, anywhere from 260, 270, 310,000. We're going to have things across the street, a lot smaller, a lot less than ours, bring our values down too. Okay? So again, that's one thing I want to tell you is, what do you want Springdale to look like? You can build houses in an area like that field and everything, but you want to beautify it, or do you want it to look like the house is jammed into there and duplex is jammed into it? And that's what you're going to see. Okay? Another question I have to ask real quickly is, who inspects the houses after being built? The builder? No. Who inspects the houses that are being built? Because I look at this house. I live in one of Britton's houses. Okay? My tub, my jacuzzi is gypsy-rigged with rocks and boards under my tub, and it's totally tilted off by an inch, basically. I got used toilets. They were cracked, and one toilet, the guy said they have a double ring on it already, so he got it from some other house. So you find things like this happening. None of the granite's ever sealed in any of the houses. I guess they don't do that anymore, so we all have stains all over a thing. We have to go seal it ourselves. And I've seen some of the interior as we're going up. There's one house, actually, we first moved here, and I'm not going to say who the builder was, but we were going to, they could really seriously bind that house till we saw the workmanship. It was the two-by-fours, and what was the plywood up against going with the two-by floors? All the nails nailing the plywood into the two-by-fours were all missed. There wasn't anything in any of the two-by-fours hardly at all. They're all missed. So I just want to ask, I mean, I love the house. It looked great from the outside, but I felt like someone says, like, who's inspecting these houses as they're getting built? Because you don't, when you look at a house, you don't go underneath the plumbing, underneath things and check stuff until you have, until you actually move in, and you kind of start looking around or whatever, and you realize, wow, I got used toilets. I think I also got a used tub that's so scraped up, you know? And just, no ceiling on my fifth granite? Great. Nice job. Cheap tile. Been there two years. It's already coming off at all the corners, you know? So, you know, I think there should be some inspection of the builders around here too also on these, on these cookie cutter, more places especially on that.
We have city inspectors who make sure and inspect buildings for compliance with the builder code, building codes.
Okay. Well, I need you to do some more spot checks on there or something, make sure they're all doing right, basically. That's basically...
I'm not sure sealing on granite is a building codes issue. I'm not sure about that.
Yeah. Well, the other houses we've ever lived in, we've built, they always put, you know, sealer on them all the time and stuff. And about the creek and stuff, I'm kind of with the creek on Roger with that. Behind our fence, we have deer, rabbits, raccoons. We even have some rats. We have a little bit of everything back there, and I'm just worried about the flooding back there personally. Since we've lived there in two years, we had big little miniature ponds back to the left of us. Now they're coming up to where they're right behind our house. And so I'm a little concerned to the ruins. I know the farmers behind us, all their pasture land floods every time there's a heavy rain. You know, all the cows are standing in water. So a lot of that land, even land that the Riggins are building on, are all flood plain land stuff, and ours was flood plain land that was supposed to be built up, but I know over half my neighbors have problems in their backyard with flooding. Over half of them does. And now they're stuck with it, basically, because they're all trying to do things to help out their flooding in their backyard. Luckily, we're one of the few that don't. But again, I just ask you, whether they're building this, whether they're doing it, again, against the rentals, but is it going to make Springdale more pretty, more beautified? That's what I ask. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you very much.
I think it's very important that I confirm just because of reputation. She did not say Riggins built her house. She said Britton built her house.
Okay. Thanks, Karen. Yes?
My name is Stacy Greenwood, and I live at 3544 Butterfly. So I'm a little bit different. I was pleased to see you here tonight, Mr. Riggins. I didn't know that the development, that you were going to be the builder, so I'm happy to see that because you're Haberton. I'm assuming it's going to kind of be like that? Nicer? Nicer. Well, so that makes me happy. I'm from here. I voted for everyone in this room. If you're in my district, glad to see you guys back and ladies. Anyway, just thank you for, Mr. Mayor, for what you do and for watching out for our city. I think as a resident on the road, I think one of the things that I have become educated on over this year process of coming in here and talking about this is I, it was an education for me to understand what it meant to live on a public street versus a residential street. And so, and that was a choice that I made. I mean, I knew how the road went. I didn't understand the definition of it. But for me, looking at the next 18 months, and then the next year, and then the year after that of this development, I really think what, for quality of life, Mr. Riggins, if you guys could use the bigger streets, like, right, for the big, for the big stuff, I really think at the end of the day, everybody's going to, everything's going to be just fine. That's what I think. So anyway, thanks for hearing, all of us, and I'm so glad it's you and not somebody else.
Thanks, Stacy.
You're welcome.
Is there someone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Bob Geringer, 3874 Butterfly. There's been some discussion about Owl Creek. I have a concern of the beavers, actually. If you look at, on the park side...
Uh-huh.
I've been a hunter and a fisherman all my life, and I know the destruction beavers can do, and they've made a mess on the east side of Mr. Britton's property.
Is it on, is it on the...
Between the park and the property.
Okay, okay.
Far east side of, east side of Hilton.
Let me, can I ask a question real quick, just while I'm, while you're on that? Is Brad still here? Anyone know if Brad's still in the building? Do we know how we address? Can you get him for me? Oh, he left. Okay. I know that we, that Public Works, well, James is here. We've gone out and cleared out beaver homes. I don't know what you call them.
Dams.
Beaver, yeah. Beaver dams. Yeah, hey, we got a beaver dam. Okay. Beaver dams before. How do we handle that? As long as it's in a drainage easement, do we still handle that? Which this would, whether it's actually city property or not.
So it's not the game fish commission? It's the Springdale City?
If it's, I guess it would need to be in Springdale. Okay. So if it's in our city limits, that could be in the, it's probably in Springdale city limits. Some, it's kind of in and out of the county there, but if it's between the park and this development...
Well, it's behind my house now.
Oh, okay.
The beavers are, I've lived on a lake. Beavers cruise up and down the lake every morning, every night.
We'll get Public...
And they go miles.
Okay. We'll get Public Works out there to look at, look at that situation over, and we've had to clear them out of other parts before.
But I'm between the two stop signs on Butterfly.
I got you. Okay. James, will y'all check that out, please?
You know, the water is starting to pool back there, and they're just cruising all the way up, and trees are falling.
Alligators working.
And I think that could be a problem of why things are starting to get swampy back there.
Okay. Well, that's good to know because we need to, you know, we do that because we need all of our, all of our drainage facilities to operate well.
Now, I don't, I don't know, I assume the city came in, they had a cutter out there on the west side of the bridge on Hilton. They got a cutter out there and cut the brush back about 30 feet, but that's not doing anything for the beaver buildup.
Right.
But you can just look over the west side, and you can see all the trees chewed up versus ones cut down.
Okay.
And it just continues all the way up. I guarantee you all the way to Butterfield. So just, just an assessment there.
Well, thanks for letting us know that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We will do what we can to deal with that. And I don't know, do we have to involve game and fish in that or anything? James? Okay. All right, is there anyone else? Okay, back to the council then, if y'all have questions.
I have a question of Patsy.
Okay.
Patsy, on this site plan, can you show us where the green spaces are? You're getting good with that now.
Okay, there's the area. There's that area right in there is green space. There's green space here, all the way down through along the power line, there's green space. There's a detention pond here. There's a detention pond here.
Get in that mic, please.
Sorry. Did you see where I was pointing? And then there's...
Kind of.
Okay. This is all that area along the north side. All of that is open space up in there.
Between the development and the park.
Right.
Okay.
There is a lot here that's open space. There's a lot here that's open space. There's a lot here that's open space. There's detention over here that's open space. There's detention here. All of that is open space left in it to meet the 20, the percentage that they gave us on that. And it's scattered throughout the subdivision so that it is available to all of those with a major area being up here. There's no question about that.
Is there a power line that's going through there?
Yep. Major power line that goes right down through there.
So even though it shows lots...
They are owned by the POA, common area that would be used for some of their amenities. There's things that you can put under the... There's, there's things that you can put under the power lines, but you can't build on them anyway. And a couple of comments, the land use plan shows this as low density residential. This is all single family, that's a mistake. It's four units per acre, it doesn't matter if it's single family, duplexes, triplexes, that you can still, if you stay at that four units per acre. Low density does not necessarily translate directly into single family. Single family units can be rental as well. That's not something the city controls of whether we're building all owner occupied units or all rental occupied units. And that's, that's just the nature of what we do. The advantage we have with the PUD is that we know what kind of houses we're going to get, what they're going to look like, what the materials are going to be. If this was zone SF2, there are no design standards. If the lots meet the minimum size, then there's nothing else the city can do to ensure a quality development, or to require any additional open space. So, that's the advantages, and you ask, why do we get smaller lots? Those are the trade-offs that we make.
Trade-off for quality.
We get amenities and quality based on some advantages of doing some smaller lots. And, you know, we've got good examples. Harbor Meadows was the first one in the area, and look how it's held up over the years.
Okay, so tell me what the amenities are again?
Um, I'll have to, I'll have to look them up, I don't commit all this stuff to memory, but I can tell you what it says. In addition to this open area at the top, there will be gazebos, playground equipment, picnic areas, a dog park, and, and those multiple green spaces that I showed you throughout the subdivision.
So, what's the northeast, the development, kind of in the northeast?
These, those are the townhomes.
The strip going...
This, this stretch right here is townhomes through here, and townhomes in that, some of them will back up, or, you know, have that green space behind it, they'll have a courtyard in between them, the rest of these are a different kind. But that's where all the townhomes will be. The rest of this will be single family, and then the duplexes are in the southeast corner.
Patsy, what was that PUD we had on Butterfield Coach Road? What was the name of it, the Commons?
Yep.
And then we reverted that, it was, came in as a PUD, and then it came back in, we rezoned it to single family homes, and created a nightmare.
And leave, and left a very small area in the center of that as part of the PUD.
Yeah.
The rest of it was rezoned to smaller lots, and it was developed that way.
Originally, it was all developed as a PUD, but it came back in and changed.
Right, and, and this council had to make that decision. It wasn't something that the developer could do without the decision of the council and the planning commission, that's right.
So, the same thing theoretically is possible here.
Well, that, that, they have to come back through the process, correct? Yes.
I understand.
I think, I think what you've just mentioned is a great reminder of why we need, we would need to be very hesitant to do that.
Yeah.
Okay, what, council, what's your pleasure?
One other question, I get to Patsy, or maybe to Brian, what's the possibility of, let me ask Patsy, on, on this PUD. What, what's the possibility of approving phase one only of this to start with?
Well, that's not what the developer's asking you to do.
I understand.
And he's asking to put the entire project together, so we know how the entire area's being worked. We did Harbor Meadows, I think we're on twenty-seven, twenty-eight phase of it, and it's taken several many years to do that. But the same covenants consist, have been consistent throughout that whole thing.
But if, if, let's say, kind of to that point, phase one and the amenities included in phase one, if, if, if it's a few years or whatever, longer than we think before phase two, or subsequent phases, phase one, the amenities that are included in phase one, we would be, you could, we would be okay with that.
Well, what, what is designed so that as we finish each phase, the amenities go with it enough so that it could stand on its own?
Okay.
Each phase.
Right, each phase, so that, so it just keeps building on it as you get through it. And the final plaque comes back to you guys for final approval, before they can transfer any ownership of any of those lots, so you have the chance to look at it as each phase comes back through.
Can you show the phases again?
And, and they're starting with phase one and part of phase two.
Which part, which part of phase two?
Hilton Road, even though it doesn't...
Phase one is all of the...
I think except for that very last street on the south part, which is phase two on there, it may not be, I, I don't know, we haven't talked about the sequencing of the road improvements yet.
What about the part to the north?
Those will be the, well, they'll have to have the good connection to get traffic down to it, so they'll have to start where the road ends now, where the improvements are to do it, to get down to the phase one, so we'll get all of that on the front end.
You're making an assumption, I want to know, are, are you sure of that?
Well, we haven't got through the construction phase of it, because we've got lots of details to work in on how all this is going to go together, and they won't do all the final engineering job until we know that they're going to move forward with it, because it gets very expensive to get it to that part.
Can we not have a commitment that they would do all of Hilton Road for the entire project?
Okay. Can you make a commitment to do all of Hilton Road? Yes.
We're going to both, going to do it practically, have an eye for it.
We'll add that to the covenants, that Hilton Road has to be completed the full length of the, the project as part of phase one development.
I got a, just a quick question, and Mike actually brought it up. On the, on the phase one, it may just be the shading, but you've got the, the part that's not a part of this project shaded, is that just, that was just a map thing?
That's just, that's just a shading thing, so we could give you some colors, that's not part of phase one.
Okay.
But, if we're making that street connection through there, that would be part of phase one.
Right.
And they're making that commitment, we'll add it to the PUD plan itself, that says that they will do Hilton Road improvements to full length. And, and their commitment is to do it within... Six years? What'd you say? They intend to have the entire thing developed in six years.
Okay.
At least the northern part of it, I think.
What's the projected timeline for phase one specifically?
They want to start as soon as possible, and I think it's eighteen months for phase one, and whatever portions of phase two they decide to include in that first. Because the, the, the development plans is that they will do phase one and made you part of phase two, as part of the first phase.
And the planning commission passed this, how, what was the...
It was a unanimous approval.
Has there been any motion? Okay, I didn't think so. Any other questions?
This is a unique deal, and, and I know it's been a lot of comparison to Harbor Meadows, but this is not Harbor Meadows at all. The townhomes, so, what was the, what was the reasoning in, in building this type of townhome in a single family look area?
Well, it provides a variety of housing types for someone who wants to live in this area that doesn't want anything to have to take care of.
There are going to be townhomes in Harbor Meadows, correct?
Yes.
There are some in Harbor Meadows, there are some in cottages at the creek.
There are townhomes or San Francisco style homes in Harbor Meadows, they're separate, they're not, they don't have an apartment look like that right there. And I know that we passed that there's going to be some townhomes built, but that's totally separate out of Harbor Meadows from the single family homes.
We have townhomes going in on Oriole Street, we have townhomes that went in Harbor across from the high school, you can see some of those as an alternative housing type, that I think we have a housing market that's looking for some of that, too.
I'm making motion, the ordinance, Carrie?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, we'll allow any other comments from the council, questions, while we got everybody here. Anybody else? Okay, Denise.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Hal?
No.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
No.
Overton?
No.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Herringman?
Yes.
The vote's four-four, Mayor, you can decide.
I'll vote yes, I think it's a good project.
Carrie's five-four. Has, has an emergency clause.
Make a motion?
Second.
Hal?
No.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Herringman?
Yes.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Emergency clause, Carrie, seven-one.
Okay. Thank you, and that concludes planning's portion of the, I don't make you get up and back and forth anymore, Patsy.
I enjoy it.
Planning Commission has been very busy.
I have a question on Park for Patsy.
Thank you all. All right, item nine, yeah, Parks and Rec Committee, Mike Lawson, chairman.
Thank you, Mayor, we met last week, we have one on, what item before us that was recommended for approval? I'll read the resolution, it's a resolution authorizing the execution of a construction contract for Rabbit's Foot Lodge appropriating funds, project number CP two thousand and one. It, it actually has a grant of sixty-two, two thirty-eight, looks like our, the city part would be the three sixty-one, nine twenty, I believe.
Right.
And it is picket construction, and it is the roof portion and a little bit of the surrounding area, I guess is the best way to put it. It's hard to describe, it's phase one, though.
Can we ask Patsy some questions about this?
We do have, this was, I believe this was forwarded, I think unanimously by the committee, if I'm remembering right. Wyman is here to answer any of the funding questions. Also, Gary Clement is here from, he's the architect that helped get the bids and everything. Gary, why don't you come on up, and if there's anything you want to add, or if the council has any questions for you?
Gary, could you explain this phase one?
Yeah. I have to put myself back together first. My first involvement with the Rabbit Foot, believe it or not, was in May of two thousand seventeen. The city, they asked me to come, and, and they, they first told me that the front, the porch was about to collapse, or bad shape, but I started noticing how bad a shape the logs were, and this, that, and the other, so it resulted in me doing a, or me, our office doing a study on the building, and then, so, and we ultimately, we did an assessment preservation plan, and that's where you study everything, and you, then you prioritize the repairs, because this building is a large building, it's caught all those logs, and it's in, it's in poor shape now. So, anyway, we ended up developing four priorities, the first priority, believe it or not, was the logs, even though they'd called me to come look at the porch. And the second was the roof, and all, all that goes with that, and the third ended up being the porch, not because, well, mainly because the, the logs were made a priority because they're so expensive to repair, because it's hard to get them out, you got to put them back in. At the end of that, included with that, I ended up doing a cost estimate for each one of those four components. The fourth component was handicap accessibility and all the other things, it was the catch-all, if you know what I mean. So, the, the total price for those first two components was three forty-six at that time, but if you take five, five percent a year, and you add to that three forty-six, I'm kind of bragging, you actually end up with four hundred and twenty thousand, which is two thousand dollars less than what our bid, or two thousand dollars more than our bid. So, it's not that the, of course, we haven't a lot of, construction prices going up, but, so anyway, believe it or not, it actually is matching the, the projection, just time has passed, and of course, as it passed, things continued to deteriorate. So, the most important thing is to get the water out of it, and also to seal those logs up. And by doing that, you're going to prevent further damage to it, you still have, you still have the ports to do, but you're going to, you're going to have a roof over the porch, and we're going to ultimately tear that porch out, assuming we, you know, assuming.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Would you say that it is structurally sound now?
I wouldn't say that. You're talking, you're talking about the porch?
No, I'm talking about the whole, the Rabbit's Foot Lodge, is the whole thing structurally sound?
Yes, 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 I mean, well, like, where the porch has got holes rotting in it, but as a general...
Overall, your assessment is that the Rabbit's Lodge is structurally sound?
Yes. Now, it needs to be repaired, and if we don't, those logs on the outside are structural, and they do rot, and if they rot, then we're going to have a problem, and so we are going to be replacing a lot of logs.
At this, at this point, is just the top logs what you found to be rotten, are there others?
Oh, there's logs, there's logs scattered all around.
Down all toward the foundation, et cetera, that are...
There's logs scattered everywhere, particularly around the roof edge.
So, this does not include replacing all those logs, does it?
Yes, yes.
So, this, this includes replacing all the structurally unsound logs in the lodge?
With the exception of the columns of the porch.
Yeah.
Because it's not time to take that down yet.
Just talk about, yeah, I understand.
But yes, it gets all the logs.
Let me, let me give you just an example, too, of something that you pointed out early on, that was, you know, the, the logs that I knew about that were, were bad, were as you walk in, basically outside of the kitchen, right? On the south side of the building. And, and Gary pointed out that, we believe it was when Fulbright, the Fulbright family owned the home, they changed the entrance of the porch from the, from the south side to the, they, they created a rock walk up against the building, and then made their entrance from the, on, on the very east end of the porch. And when they, when they did that, now the water runs off the roof, splashes off those rocks, and continually splashes up against the, those logs. So, part of this project, I don't think it'll be in phase one.
No.
But part of this project, after those logs are replaced, and as the porch is redone, and the ADA access, the accessibility issues are addressed, we'll be removing that rock walk that wasn't, wasn't original to the building anyway, and, and eliminating that, that splash that would cause those logs to rot. So, that's just, that's just an example of some changes that, that would need to be made as we move forward on this, that'll help, help the building stay and repair better, easier to maintain.
Now, and you've got your, the bid price of what we bid, but included in those, that bid price, we've included, we, we identified every log that needs repair to it, and, and as well as like all the sofas, we're replacing all the fascias, but we've included allowances in addition to those things we specifically identified on the plans, you know, for the roof decking, and we've got a hundred and fifty lineal feet of logs, we've got fifteen crowns. So, we, we built in, because you can't see it all, I mean, we're, no matter how hard we can, we don't have x-ray vision of how far the rot has traveled. So, we think we have, not padded, but we have included allowances to allow more to be found that's in this contract number.
And you don't just call up the Springdale log guy?
No.
Yeah.
They're very hard to find.
You want to try and take care of it while, while we're doing it.
The contract, the, the, the log restoration company is actually the, the crew that does the work for the State Parks. Last, recently, they did Devil's Den, they did, they worked on those cabins recently.
Okay.
All the logs that are going to be put in will be repurposed logs, like timbers, because it's really not a round log we have, they're more, they're, they're rectangular, they're like eight by, six by eight. And so, but the reason we want to do that is because the new lumber will, will have more sapwood, whereas the virgin lumber that's inside the barns and stuff that are being removed all the time, won't have that, and that's what State Parks uses as well.
I know it's in your specs, but what, what kind of roof are you putting back on?
It's going to be an asphalt roof, it'll be a twenty-five year roof. Originally, it did have wood shingles on it, but I don't know if that was before or after, Fulbright bought it in nineteen... Fulbright bought it in nineteen twenty-eight, or twenty-four, nineteen twenty-four.
Yeah, he sold it in the mid-forties.
Right.
Is this redwood, is that what we're using? Is it a redwood log, or is it?
No, it'll, it'll be, it'll be, I'm not sure what exactly it'll be, but it'll be a virgin lumber that's salvaged from, from buildings.
They're oak now, I would assume.
Well, they're gonna be oak, they didn't use pines like that.
I mean, 'cause I'm sure they farmed it nearby.
Yeah, what was there, they, they harvested off, off the, off the farm, and it could've been anything, you know.
Yeah, that's true. Other questions? Oh, go ahead, Randall.
I'm making a motion, the resolution passed.
Second, Pat.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any more questions or comments? Does anyone out there come for this? I don't see anybody.
They look happy.
Okay, Denise.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Carrie's eight-zero.
All right. Thanks, Carrie, appreciate you driving up here and all the work.
Thanks for that explanation, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Item ten, Finance Committee and Chairman Jeff Watson.
The only item for the Finance Committee was for the approval of a payment of an invoice for the municipal campus that was over a million dollars. And the title to that, and the committee forwarded that with recommendation for approval. The title of that resolution is "A Resolution Authorizing Payment of an Invoice Project Number 18BPC1."
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carrie's eight-zero.
All right, thank you. And I'm gonna turn item eleven over to Ernest, our city attorney.
Thank you. This is a, the resolution setting a hearing date on a petition to abandon a portion of utility easement in City of Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas. The last page of the agenda is the little highlighted area that they're seeking to get that portion of the utilities and vacated. And this just sets the public hearing, it sets the public hearing for February twenty-third, and the city clerk will publish notice of that as well.
Entertain a motion, too?
The resolution pass.
Resolution, thank you. I thought everybody went to sleep for a minute. All right. And did we get a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. All right, Denise.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Carrie's eight-zero.
All right, thank you. Any comments from council? City attorney?
No, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, Randall, yeah.
One comment real quick, on, when we have these PUDs come up, if we could get just a little more detail in the packet, 'cause, I mean, I, I had to go back and watch the video to figure out what was going on and, and try to figure out what, what I'm looking at, especially on the one in the ballpark district, because it's a little more with the commercial and everything, it'd be nice.
Right, okay. All right, we'll try and, try and put more stuff in the-
Just the pictures.
Yeah, more pictures, more elevations and, yeah.
I'm on board with that, Mayor. It's, I think also part of it is, we're new, so this is stuff that was in, in effect before we took over, or before we, we took our, our places here, but that'd be very helpful.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, I don't have anything. We have a motion to adjourn. For adjourn, thank you.